Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our special select board meeting. This is Monday, February 4th, 2019 at 7:00 PM and this is the Callahan Room. With that, Mr. Hollup and those who are able, if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, could we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. John Bartels.
Here.
Mark Strube.
Here.
John Boyle.
Here.
Edward Hollup.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Lieutenant Delta.
Here.
Thank you. So we have minutes from January 28th to approve and before a motion, let's go over any additions or corrections. And I have a few. On page three, Nancy, it's not Tom Bennett, it's Tom Betit.
Thank you.
All right, and there's maybe four or five of those in that paragraph.
I'll fix.
Down where it says Department Budgets.
Yep.
Instead of Chief Co., it's probably me that said that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the thought, but I'm no longer Chief or at the bottom of the page, it should be Chair. Chair Bartels.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm going to be Commander.
Yeah. Well, Commander and Chief, yeah. On page five, Petition 393, the same thing, should be Chair.
At least I'm consistent.
And downward, down in the Barton Property Phase Two, the fifth line down, where it says January 8th, 2019.
Yep.
Mr. Walto, Mr. Barton's attorney, actually Catherine Klein is the town's attorney, KP Law. Right?
Yep.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay. And then page six, the same thing with Chief Bartels, Spectrum Cable License. I don't mind having this in here, but I don't know if we're supposed to have it in there, and this is the last line of the first paragraph where it says Chair Bartels said in the executive session.
Yep.
I'll leave that to Ken's discretion as to what we should do.
Thank you.
And the last one that I have is on page 10. It's the Items for Future Agenda, the third from the last line. That other one, well, where it says Sheila Irvin, Chair of the BRTA, that should be BRPC, correct now? Sheila Irvin is Chair of the BRPC, correct?
No, she is Chair of the BRTA now.
It's the BRTA, okay. Then that's my fault. That doesn't need to be corrected. I thought it was the BRPC.
I was reading that again.
Okay.
She was Chair of the BRPC.
Okay, let's not confuse them. She's the Chair of the BRTA now.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Thank you. And that's what I have. I like your minutes, they're very thorough.
Thank you.
That's why there's so many corrections. Because we have so many. But they are very good.
Would it help you if I put line numbers on the page or exceptions?
No. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Anything else? Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept the January 28th, 2019 Minutes as Correct.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay. So at this point in time, I'm going to kind of break this up because this is a special meeting with kind of a special discussion, but I'm going to read off the guidelines for our public address to the Board. There's kind of two of them that we're going to have. But the guidelines more or less pertain to both sessions, so I'm just going to read them over and then I'm going to explain them a little bit. So, this is a time when the public may address the Board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the Board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. The public address to the Board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the Board Chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the Chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the Board, please make the request at this time. The request may be granted by the Board Chair. Address comments to the Board Chair and be concise. Now, is there anyone here who wishes to address the Board with regard to anything other than the Wacona Building Project? Okay. So let me read the guidelines for, in addition to those guidelines I just made with regard to the Wacona Building Project discussion. The first part of the discussion is going to be comments from the audience, and this portion will last for approximately 30 minutes. Comments only, questions and debate will not take place at this time. Be concise, and because of the number of people here, I'm going to limit it to three minutes a person, okay? And when you get close to that point, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. And I'm not trying to be rude, I just want to keep it timed because there's a lot of people here and I want to make sure that most everyone gets their comments in. And I am going to ask that Dalton residents be recognized first in this debate because that's what, as a Board, we're looking for, is input from the residents. Now, if there are people out of town who wish to make a comment, that will be allowed, but it will be allowed after all of our residents have a chance to comment to us. Then after that, after we get done with the public comment, we have members from the School Building Committee and from the school here, the district here tonight. We have Mr. Sean Armikos, who's the co-chair of School Building Committee, which I will refer to as the SBC during the discussion. He's also Chair of the Central Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, and he is a Hinsdale resident. We also have Mr. Thomas Callahan Jr., who's co-chair of SBC, a Dalton resident. Mr. Aaron Robb, principal of Wacona Regional High School and SBC member, he is also a Dalton resident. We have Jason Deon, who is a CBRSD Building and Grounds Manager. He's an SBC member, he is as well a Dalton resident. And we have Superintendent Lori Kazna, the Central Berkshire Regional School District with us here tonight. So at that point in time, I'm going to allow whatever members of that committee wish to make a statement or say something, and then we're going to discuss, we, the Board, will discuss and ask questions of the Board, not the Board, of the committee members if we see fit. After which, we'll also discuss whether or not we're going to conduct a vote to endorse the project tonight. If we feel we have enough information, we may or we may not. So that's still an open matter. So with that, we're going to go back to the agenda, and we have one more issue to, or matter to take care of before we get into any discussion, and that is an appointment to the Dalton Housing Authority. And this is item number six. So before you, you have a memorandum from Mr. Walto to us dated today, ratification of appointment to the Dalton Housing Authority, and I'll read it. It says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification, the appointment of Robert R. Mary of 33 Ensign Street to the Dalton Housing Authority until the annual town election on May 13th, 2019. Mr. Mary will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Nils Eric Jacobson. Executive Director Susan Gregory's letter of recommendation is attached. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And Ms. Gregory wrote us, or wrote Mr. Walto, "Dear Mr. Walto, the Board of Commissioners of the Dalton Housing Authority requests that Robert Mary be appointed to the Board until the May elections. He will replace Mr. Jacobson. Thank you, Susan Gregory." May I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Robert Mary of 33 Ensign Street to the Dalton Housing Authority until the annual town election on May 13th, 2019. Mr. Mary will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Nils Eric Jacobson.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded and serious discussion. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. Did everyone sign the sign-in sheet? Everyone got that? Okay. Okay, this is a point in time when I'm going to allow the residents of Dalton to voice their comments, opinions with regard to the Wacona High Building Project. It's been in the news quite a bit, and the discussion around the community has been pretty lively lately. So I'll open it up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jared Shannon, I'm a Dalton resident. I live at 22 Taunton Terrace. I've been a teacher in Central Berkshire Regional School District for 17 years. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Families for Wacona, an advocacy group that was recently formed. We represent dozens of families and citizens from CBRSD, and our group is growing by the day. I'm here to express my full support of new school and the work done by the Wacona Building Committee. I appreciate the Select Board for giving us the time to express our thoughts here tonight. This is an important moment in our town's history. Efforts to delay, stall, or stall this process is in effect an effort to defeat this project. We will not get another chance at this. The education of our kids, who are our future, are the most important part of this endeavor. The investment in our community and the long-term positive impact of having a new school in our community is too important of an opportunity to pass up, and at the end of the day, we need new school. There is one important issue that should be at the forefront of all these discussions, and that is education. Without this investment, I fear that there will be severe long-term consequences. Some in the room would like to, as we are well beyond the 11th hour, consider a plan to renovate at this point. They're not taking into consideration the process or timeframe that has been clearly laid out and published for almost a year, nor does it consider the financial cost that a delay would cause. There were 13 options carefully studied by the Wacona Building Committee. They did so very publicly and transparently. To aim to go back six months in the process at this junction is insane. It will mean a year's worth of work, $850,000 will be wasted, and in the end, only nothing's being done. We do not have time to litigate this any longer. A delay by even one year would cost millions of dollars. The past nine months since the feasibility vote has consisted of careful public planning resulting in a compromise on a large number of topics. The fact is that this building, the building that we are moving into, is infinitely more green and efficient than the one we are leaving. Those who read the report on existing conditions after the feasibility study would understand that and would know why the Wacona Building Committee selected the best and most feasible option, which the state has agreed to invest in. We should trust the Building Committee and the work that they did. We should trust the plan that was accepted by the state, that it's the best option for us. The state is willing to invest in us, so we should be willing to invest in ourselves. We should respect the work done by the Wacona Building Committee for over a year. They presented us with a fiscally responsible way to ensure that first-class education will continue to take place at Wacona for the next 60 years. We do only have one shot at this, and I hope our Select Board is willing to give a resounding yes to the project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Others who would like to speak to this? Yes, sir.
Let me echo Jared's comments and...
Oh, could you identify yourself?
Sorry, thank you. Joe, D51 Audi Drive in Dalton. A long time ago, I participated in the vision session with the School Building Committee, and one thing I learned is that we're not just building a structure, we're transforming the way our kids are educated. We're giving them the opportunity for 21st century learning. So that investment that we're making is just not in bricks and mortar, but it's also in methodology and approaches that we can leverage as we move forward. I urge the Committee to vote in support of the project, and I urge the community to support it as well. It is a big tax hit, no matter how we look at it, but the state has invested, I believe, 57% of that investment is coming forward. So some of the data that's in the Eagle certainly needs to be corrected. A lot of the residents need to understand what that impact is and what value we're getting at the end of the day. Again, it's transformation of the educational process and just not bricks and mortar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Anybody out in the hallway? Oh, David, go ahead.
David Wassley, 191 Mortar Road, and Chairman of Dalton Green Committee. As a Green Committee member, I would state that the vote on the power plant was pretty disappointing about eliminating the option of geothermal power, heat, air conditioning for the building. And I'm not quite understanding why a very thoughtful, considered vote by 15 or 16 or 20 community member was derailed by half a column by Jerry Parnas in the Eagle one day by the community had completely changed their minds or reconsidered that or essentially trusted that option based on what they thought the community might be considering rather than actually fighting for what was correct, what was right, and what they had carefully considered prior to that. I don't know if it's too late to reconsider the geothermal, but we are advocating for a power plant that is green and non-fossil fuel.
Thank you.
One more comment, please?
Oh, yes, go right ahead.
Additionally, the community needs to understand that there is a cost to doing nothing. This is not build a new building or let things go the way it is. There is a significant cost to maintaining that building and continuing to power it the way it is. The inefficiencies that go on in that building are astounding. I was there four or five years ago when my son was still in school. The windows are open on one side and it's too cold, about 85 degrees on the other side of the building. There is a cost to maintain that and to try to fix a building that is essentially falling apart. People need to understand that doing nothing is not doing nothing. Doing nothing is maintaining a building that is falling apart.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
How late are we laying avenue? I'm reminded a number of years back when we had a plan going from town where they wanted to put an addition in every school we had, including boxing in the courtyards of Wacona to increase it. There was a gentleman by name of Tom Shoretell. They made one of the best statements going, "Buildings do not educate children. Quality teachers educate children." I'm not going to be around here long enough to see either one of these investments paid off, but we ought to consider if there's a problem with education, make sure we hire quality teachers, let the buildings be whatever they are. They blink about how to write and read and write by fireflies.
Thank you. Was there someone out in the hall that wanted to speak? No, also? Anybody else?
I would basically support the geothermal.
Could you identify yourself?
Dick Johnson.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about education, this is a no-brainer. You need to go with what's environmental for the energy, the geothermal. I mean, I can't see voting for this unless you do that. It makes all the sense. What the heck? Yeah, that's the education right there is the geothermal.
Thank you. Others? Yes, Dick.
I'm Dick Locktale, I live on Patricia Avenue. It's well documented that we need a new school. There's no question about it. I think all of you have probably toured the school. No question that it's not a 21st century school as it exists right now. The Building Committee, I think, has made the intelligent choice, the same choice that many communities have made. It's better to replace instead of try to renovate or repair. That's a very inefficient way to go. But I'm a person who kind of looks at a glass half empty. If you don't do this, look at what happens to the school, but look at what happens to the town. And if you wonder about that, look at what's happening in Berkshire Hills right now. They're having numerous meetings to debate what happens now. We voted down our new school. What are we going to do? What's that going to do to our community? And it's not school officials that are dealing with this, it's town officials, because it has a major impact on the town, and it would have a major impact on the town of Dalton if we were not to go through with this project. So I hope you take both the pros and the cons into consideration when you vote, because your vote means a lot to all of the residents in Dalton, and I certainly hope that it'll be a positive vote in favor of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. I saw some other hands here. I thought, I guess so. Go ahead.
Jim Chivers, 71 Peru Road, Hinsdale.
Oh, wait a second. Before you do this, Jim, seeing that you're from Hinsdale, any Dalton residents wish to speak before we open it up to the outside? Yes, sir. I'll give, you'll be the first one, Jim.
10098 Pinecrest Drive.
Yes.
I'm in support of the school. My last daughter's graduating this year. My kids aren't going to benefit from this, but I do know that if you want to keep this town where it's at or keep it going, we're going to need a new school. One thing, my wife's a teacher up at Greylock, they have a new school, beautiful, but the one thing I have learned as I'm growing up here is finding out how much of a home school is for a lot of kids. It's astounding. I mean, they need a safe, many kids unfortunately need a safe place to go. They need a place to call home where they can learn, and that's what this school gives them, whether it be the athletics, after-school extracurricular activity, the theater and whatnot. And Wacona has served its purpose, but it is dated, and it's time for a new, in my opinion, time for a new school, a new fresh face, and I think everyone benefits. The town benefits, the kids benefit, the whole Berkshire County will benefit. And I also think when you have, and Jared has worked, and the whole Building Committee has worked tirelessly trying to get the funding, I mean, this is a lot of money that we're capacity of giving away. I mean, this is our money, even though we say the state's giving us money. It's our money. We paid it. Some community in the state is going to get it, and I don't know why we wouldn't say we deserve it, because the state thinks we deserve it. I mean, the school is old enough, and they're saying, "Here, you deserve it." To me, it's a no-brainer. I would love to go with the geothermal, but I just think that's a little extra more than what we need, but I agree with it, but I just, at this point, I think we just have to concentrate on getting the building passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Dalton residents? You're on, Jim.
Okay, again, Jim Chivers, 71 Peru Road, Hinsdale. Just, my concern is with the geothermal. You know, first we were going to do the geothermal on it, it's very expensive. My question is, some of my reading, I was reading, and I don't know how accurate this is or how accurate my memory was in the reading, that the state wants to go toward geothermal for, to have all the schools geothermal in the future, the cost of a retrofit would be way more than doing this originally. So if that's what the state is really looking to do, a reconsideration of geothermal may be enhanced. And, you know, the other thing is, if this doesn't pass through, I'd just like to see what the possibility of rebuilding the old school, just keeping the auditorium and the gym, the beautiful white brick. It's, to me, it's a classic. It'd be nice to be able to save that, and if the rest of the school's alone in glass, I know it'd be hard to replace it in sections of pieces. I went to the new Tekonic, very impressive building, but the Tekonic, both the auditorium and the gym are smaller than the old Tekonic, and I don't know if that's going to happen to Wacona, the building plans that are there. So if this doesn't go through, then you want to consider, if that is the case, what the state will do, will back, keeping just the auditorium and the gym in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jim Bradley, Moza, and I agree with this gentleman. I think the cost of retrofitting for geothermal 10 years from now is going to be much more expensive than to do it the first time around. The state is saying they want 100% renewable, and we should be doing that and thinking of it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay. One more, it's gone twice. Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I hope in our discussion, we may address some or all of those things that were brought up, but again, we only have a limited amount of time tonight because this is part of our agenda. We have other things that we have to attend to tonight before we adjourn. So at this point in time, I'd like to open it up to members of the School Building Committee. If anybody wishes to make a statement, just identify yourself when you speak, that would be great.
If I sit?
You may sit.
My name's Aaron Robb, principal at Wacona. I also live 376 North Street here in Dalton. I did prepare some remarks in part out of respect for the time that you have tonight, and I do want to just hit upon some important points that I hope resonate with the Board before you make your own consideration. I sent a copy of a 25-page document called the Educational Program to Chairman Bartels to be distributed amongst the Select Board. I am going to make reference to that just briefly, particularly the first page of it, in just a moment. I'm actually very excited to be here tonight in large part because Central Berkshire for the last 10 years has been submitting a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and finally, after 10 consecutive years, the Mass School Building Authority heard us and listened to us. It was actually about a month after I became principal of Wacona, not even three years ago, that Superintendent Kazna called me and asked me if I wanted to take part in a building project. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't fully expecting that, but it's been an exciting time since the MSBA accepted us into the program. And during this time, not only throughout the process here, but also in co-authoring the educational program for the school, myself and our science coordinator, Sean Therion, there's a famous quote from an educational philosopher by the name of John Dewey, and that quote echoes through my head when I think about this building project. It reads, "If we teach today's students as we taught yesterday, we rob them of tomorrow." And that's a particular thought that constantly echoes through my head whenever we are talking about the building project, whether we're talking about the layout of the grounds, whether or not we're talking about how many seats in the auditorium, whether or not we're talking about where we're going to put the Learning Commons, which is the new term for a library. I've been involved with Wacona Regional High School for over the past 30 years as both a student, teacher, coach, and administrator. I'm sentimentally attached to the school as much as anyone else, and I truly love our school. But I've come to the realization that in order for us to completely and effectively deliver a 21st century education to our students, we need a 21st century facility to do it within. Keep in mind, I'm saying that as we are already two decades deep into the 21st century. Much has been made about the new school's heating and cooling system over the last several weeks. Frustratingly, from my point of view, very little has been discussed about the rest of the project, and in particular, the heart of the project, the educational program. The opportunity we have before us to begin anew in this fashion will not be presented to us again. to us again. Over the years, I've heard many folks in the community complain, and rightfully so, about the lack of state funding around here. Well, now we have it. The state of Massachusetts is standing before us with approximately $30 to $35 million without stretched hands. They will not present this opportunity twice. While I deeply respect those who are concerned about their tax rates, the fact remains that public education is a pay it forward system. That's how this works. And if folks took the time to fully understand our needs and how we plan to address those needs, I think folks would be more inclined to pay it forward with us. So we're here tonight to explain those needs and the plan to address them. In particular, we would like to address the educational program that serves as the heart of the project. This will help us explain how the brick and mortar of the new Wacona will accommodate what goes within it. The bottom line is that education, what we experience in school, has changed drastically since we all went to school. That is why the school itself needs to change. Ultimately, I'm in the business of doing right by kids, so that's why I'm here tonight. With that, we're happy for the opportunity to review key aspects of the educational program with you. And if you have any questions along the way, we'll be very happy to answer. So what I would like to do is just reference the very first page, if possible, of the educational program. I don't know if other folks have copies of it or not.
I don't believe, do you have your copy? I have copies of them. I have my copy. Let's put it that way. And if I could say, even though I read it once, it was way back when, when it was presented. And I don't, do you, can you remember when it was presented to begin with?
Uh, about half a year ago.
Yeah. It was good to review it one more time, but I don't, I don't want to steal your thunder going.
No, it's, um, what I'm going to do is just paraphrase a, a piece of it that I think a lot of people aren't aware of, and Mr. Diver actually alluded to this in his statements. Back when this process started, we engaged in what's called a visioning session. And this is something that the design team, the architects, set up. And we did our visioning session through the leadership of a highly respected educational consultant by the name of Dr. Frank Locker. We amassed 40 different constituents representing all walks of life from the community. So it wasn't just teachers and students. It wasn't just parents. It was from across the community spectrum. And we gathered in our library for two, two full days. And in that process, it was a very, very intense process, we were able to extract some of the aspects that we thought were most important, the, the basic tenants of what the Wacona building project was going to be about. Some of it refers to physical needs, some of it refers to educational needs. And, and the ones that, that really rang true with everybody and really informed the building project, that the building's got to promote student engagement. Wacona Regional High School, as it stands right now, built in 1961, is what I, what I call in terms of educational construction, a sit and listen school. Our, our school was built for students to sit and listen. And the fact of the matter is, that's not how we teach anymore. As an evaluator of teachers, if I walk in and I evaluate, I see a teacher lecturing for 50 minutes to a bunch of 14-year-olds, they're not going to get a positive evaluation back from me. That's not how we teach anymore. It has to be far more highly engaging for students to meet their needs today. The second thing that really came out of this visioning session was to create flexible and collaborative learning spaces. We have some classes that because of the, the limitations of the classrooms as they're set up now, in order for students to break out and to learn and to collaborate, they're doing it in the hallways. They have to. Our physics teacher is very much bound by the room he teaches in. If you've toured the high school, he teaches in one of the rooms off of the lab, which was really set up as a, as a lecture hall. So his class is around the hallways. We have history classes that break out into the hallways. And in a new construction, you would actually create usable, flexible breakout spaces, spaces for both common areas and also in what's in the form of what we're called project or seminar rooms. The other thing that was very important that came out of the visioning session was for this building to support 21st century learning skills. For years and years, American education was based on the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. And the fact of the matter is, is that as we move into the 21st century, there's the four Cs. There's critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. That's what colleges are looking for out of our students. That's what employers are looking for out of our students. And those are the skills that we need to foster in this new environment. And then lastly, making sure that there's, this building's truly safe and secure. I have great confident in, confidence in the security of our current building, but there are enhancements that we can certainly make through new, make through new construction to not only cut down on the foot traffic, the daily foot traffic into the building, but also to make it a safer place should there, an emergency actually occur. So those are the, those are the basic tenants of the educational program. What I do want to do is, is just lastly, go over some of the highlights of some things that people probably are talking most about with the educational program. I know there was reference to our school gym a little bit earlier. Our school gym by state standards is woefully undersized. Our square footage, if I'm correctly from Ron, about 9,300 square feet. Pretty close. We're, with a new building, we, we stand to, to get 11,000 square foot gym. And we also stand to get, on either side of that gym, two additional 1,500 square foot spaces that we absolutely do not have right now. A weight room for our students to use and a fitness center that our students can use as well. Those two separate spaces would be used during the day for, for classes. We could have weight training classes, which we don't currently offer. We, we are, are offering yoga and stress management, but we have to teach those classes either in B lobby right now or on the stage in the auditorium. We would actually have a room for that in the new building. So that's something to keep in mind. Our lab space is woefully inadequate for, for our building. We have science, seven science teachers in one lab. That is, it's, it's almost unheard of in, in schools these days. Most science classrooms in newer construction, you have a classroom space and a lab breakout space. We're proposing five science labs that we would schedule seven teachers into and we can do that easily. And, and they would be up to standards so that our students can get the science instruction that they deserve. We have a three-year science requirement at Wacona, but believe it or not, as of last year, 103% of our students take science. That means some students are doubling up. It's a growing, it's, it's growing by leaps and bounds in terms of student interest, particularly in the STEM subjects, science, technology, engineering and mathematics. And those classrooms would help address that need. There's been talk obviously about our auditorium. We're proposing a 550-seat auditorium that would seat the entire student body plus staff. It'd be state-of-the-art. It would be far bigger than what the middle school currently has, that's for sure. It would be approximate to what we have now in terms of size, but it would be up to standards and it would actually include spaces for our highly successive drama, drama program to have storage, dressing room, that sort of thing. And it would, it'll also serve as a community hub. I'm sure that people would start booking that space and renting it more often in the future with, with a newer space. We're going to have more and improved fine and performing arts spaces. Currently, our art room, we only have one in the building to service 530 students. There are 17 seats in it and we have a waiting list for all of our art classes. We sometimes have to tell students to wait a year before they take art at Wacona primarily because every seat's taken in the art classes. This building proposes two art rooms. And, and that would also probably inform the way in which we go about offering art classes. We'd be able to offer a clay class or a pottery class, which we certainly can't do right now. Our library is extremely outdated, although we have a very progressive librarian that works very hard to bring it up to snuff as best as possible. But the learning commons, which would be the new name for the library, would be the academic heart of the school. It would sit in the middle of the two academic pods, the two two-story academic pods that would be in the back of the school. And it would be a highly utilized space as our current library on any given period has between 30 and 60 students in there during study hall. That would also include a new space called a maker space for student independent projects and work. I think the last thing, the two last things that I think that probably strike most home to me as an administrator is that we would finally have what I consider to be truly appropriate special education spaces. For the last three years, I've been struggling just to find a place to offer physical therapy to students. And, you know, sometimes it's had to happen in the hallways. I finally took over an old home, that room, and, and basically booked that space for OTPT and speech services to occur, so they don't have to happen in small cramped spaces or inappropriate spaces. This new design would adequately service those students in our special needs population and really, I think, the best thing about the design is it would integrate them quite seamlessly into the general education spaces as well. They wouldn't be set off to the side or congregated in, in one area, which I think is really important. And the last point I'll make about this particular, some of the enhancements with this new building, we're proposing what's called a student support center that would be led by our assistant principal and would contain a school, a school adjustment counselor's office along with our three guidance counselors and our nurse. Currently, those student support center, student support services at Wacona are scattered throughout the building. If you are a student who needs to access the school adjustment counselor and you need mental health services, which is what she provides essentially, you have to walk into the room and everybody's going to know what you're walking in there for. Same thing with the nurse, same thing, particularly with the assistant principal. So what we're proposing is a space adjacent to the administrative offices where there's one door and there would be an administrative assistant stationed at that door and students would be walking in, but nobody would initially know what their business is. Privacy is a real issue at our school right now. Our school was not built to have private conversations. Discipline in 1961 wasn't handled as privately as it has to be handled right now. So this new setup, the student support center, which would be led by our assistant principal, would help rectify that situation. So while there's many more things in the educational program, I do want to make sure that those hallmark aspects of the educational program are out there and that folks are aware, not just you, but the public and general. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Mr. Robb at this point in time, or do you want to reserve that until we're all done?
Understood. With the way you.
Okay. All right. That'll have to do. Anybody else from the committee would like to say anything? Okay. All right. There's no doubt there's, uh, well, there's, there's two sides to the, I don't want to say argument, but to the debate with the school. And, um, I look at, there's one way I look at, look at the school is part of our town's infrastructure. And like any other piece of infrastructure that we may have, at some point in time, things have to be taken care of. And, uh, this is a time when something has, to me, something has to be done with Wacona. The debate here is, well, what about renovation? Why not, why not renovation? Why not instead of new? I'd be giving an opinion on this, but I know that others here on the committee have a better feel for it. And, um, can that be addressed briefly? We've got about 30 minutes here or left to this discussion. Can you address that issue in a nutshell type of thing?
I think the disruption created by renovation indoor, renovation addition is out of the question, given the expectations of this educational plan outlined by Principal Robb. We had examples given to us by the project manager. If anyone's familiar, and I think most people here are, with the footprint of Wacona, just try to consider this. If renovation started at the end of A and/or B corridor, this total renovation to get the school to whatever the plan would be designed for could take as much or longer than the approximate two years of building a new building. The disruption would be unavoidable.
If I can clarify that. The, the renovation would be about 35 months, whereas the new building construction would be 18.
Excuse me?
A shot on the coast.
Thank you. So what do we do with the kids while half of Upper A and Upper B are being renovated? We have to put them someplace. A logical suggestion has been bring in temporary classrooms. That would have to be competing with the service roads that will be built around the campus for equipment to be brought in and supplies stored. The campus would be severely disrupted throughout this period of time. We would lose access to the areas being renovated. The kids would have to go someplace to get their, their education. It would compromise every other thing done in the building, which is not adequate. I think you'd have to go to a building today and say, speaking of student services, there are so many student services that are required by student ed plans given today than there was in the time a lot of us were in high school. It's a different ballgame. Where families took care of these things in, in another day, they aren't able to in this day. This isn't just at Wacona and it isn't just in a high school. Practically every elementary and middle school and high school in the country is afflicted with these problems. It takes space and more personnel to deal with these problems. That cannot happen in a school constructed like Wacona. As Mr. Robb alluded to, a lot of people have, have a lot of good memories, you know, and just an awful lot of tradition in our minds. I'm one of them. And I had to be educated to the fact by experts that wishing that school could be redone is a waste of time. For all the reasons given, we have to get this school. We cannot let this opportunity go by. That is ridiculous. We might not get the school that everybody wants. We just can't get everything, but this school will offer what the specs and ad plan call for. A renovated school isn't likely to. And if it does, it's going to take three years to get there. So I ask anybody here if they've got a child or grandchild that would go through those three years on a renovation. You probably would not want them to go, be there while this, this interference would go on. That is ridiculous when we can avoid it. Give my overemphasis.
Yeah.
That's the way it is.
I would just add also, just as a, as a concrete example, two concrete examples. Number of schools that have chosen to go the full renovation route. I'm not talking about renovation addition like Mount Graylock because a lot of people like to compare our project with Mount Graylock or Teconic. They're not comparable projects. Mount Graylock's a perfect example. They, they ended up going to school in their academic wing and building a whole new school off of their auditorium and their gymnasium because their gymnasium size-wise, I believe, exceeded what, what the state saw as a guideline for their school. That being said, they were still able to go to school and then move into the new one and then the old, the old, the academic one was torn down. In this instance, if you're talking about a full renovation of Wacona, we'd be talking about temporary classrooms most definitely. And those temporary classrooms, the state will not reimburse that. You have to really look at what's reimbursable and what's not by the state. And the state will not reimburse portable or temporary classrooms to be brought in, which would be quite costly. And to Mr. Callahan's point, we would be talking about, um, three-quarters, if not more, of us, of some students' academic careers being in the high school, happening in a construction zone, if we went the renovation route.
I was talking, uh, earlier with regard to reimbursement and the plans. And to my best knowledge is that depending on the plan, depends on not the percentage of reimbursement, but what things can be reimbursed. Am I correct in saying that? Okay. So in that respect, when you have a plan such as, well, the reimbursement, let's go for the lack of reimbursement, the, the total rehab. Can we, can we get that straight to the audience here? Is that, is that a reimbursement job? Is that, some of that reimbursable? Or is it not what the MSBA will reimburse the dis-?
There's reimbursement, but it's not going to be the same exactly as what we have now in the building. And I, I don't know all the, I don't know all the details of it, but you're going to get a reimbursement. And I don't know all the details of it, but you're gonna get a reimbursement now either way.
Okay. Okay. It comes down to what the state views as reimbursable.
Right.
Okay.
You'd have to file a plan, though, for the whole reimbursement. You started, how long would that take to even get?
We're too late.
You're too late?
We're too late.
Okay.
I mean, the school building committee basically went through the better part of months, six months. They went to the community, they had four community sessions where, you know, the community members came in, gave their opinions. It was overwhelming that everyone would prefer to see the building.
Right. So if this plan, as it's now written, the April 6 vote doesn't pass, and you decide to do this, it would take a very long time to even get to this point again where you're ready to start.
If the April 6 vote doesn't pass and we have to do something to that building, it's all on the books, the burden's on the taxpayer one hundred percent. Any reimbursement is lost at that point in time, unless you go through the process again.
Right. And that would, that would take years, is that right?
Yeah, I would add, what I would add is if the no vote, if a no vote occurs on April 6th, it's back to the drawing board for us, because in order, you're out of the MSBA process, and then you have to go back into the process.
Right.
And you have to start with the application process. It's square one all over again. And let's say ten, fifteen years down the road, the MSBA takes a chance on us again. It'll probably be that long, if not longer.
Okay.
We would have to create a whole...
That's what I was trying to bring out. It isn't like one or the other right now.
No, the state has accepted our schematic design for a brand new school.
Right. Thank you.
So, but there is one other opportunity after April 6th. That's a revote.
Right.
If it goes down, you can revoke this. This is similar to what happened with Nessus.
That's true, but the conditions of the project cannot change.
Right. The plan stays the same, it can't change it. You vote on the exact same thing, you just voted on it on April 6th. But there is the opportunity to have a second one.
Yes. How far apart would they have to be, or would they be? I imagine it'd be pretty close.
About a year.
Really? No, it's like a hundred, a hundred and twenty days.
It's no more than a hundred.
No, no more than a hundred and twenty.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm a little confused here, because when this plan was presented, the option of reimbursement wasn't an option, right? It was kinda like what everybody was talking about, the state wouldn't have a reimbursed for anything. Now all of a sudden, I see where the state can reimburse us, reimburse us for wilderness. Am I correct?
I don't understand your question.
He meant renovation. Your renovation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if the, back when that decision was made, all the other options were taken off. So once you commit to that option, that's the one you go with.
Yeah, but I don't think the general public had that knowledge, 'cause it kept getting put to the people out there, reimbursement wasn't an option, because the state wanted...
Well, I think that was probably taken out of context. That means if the plan going forward fails, then reimbursement is not an option. All those scenarios have some level of reimbursement.
This has been going on since 2016, correct? And since 2016, there's been thirty school board meetings and another thirty school building committee meetings, and they're open to the public. This has been debated, talked about, perfect plan picked by everybody. There's not a secret knock to get into the meetings. There's not a password to get in the meetings. I think this has been debated. We got a project in front of us, and that's what we need to go with.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Couple of technical questions on the building. Is it going to have a flat roof or a landing roof?
Good question.
Yeah.
Everybody's question.
And?
Gonna be flatter than heck.
Yeah. Okay. We got, I have another question.
Jack.
Flat roof's not really a flat roof. It has a pitch to it. They have a design where they have scuppers or drains spread throughout, which pitches towards it.
It was not as bad as it used to be.
No.
Is that all you're saying?
It's far better. They do a lot better with materials.
Again, in relation to cost and the new building. We were told a year ago by John, and John's always accurate, that there were...
Oh, wait a second time.
Yeah, bye, John. That there are additional costs to towns for relocation, refinishing of the playing fields, and landscaping. Do you have any cost estimates for what they would cost?
We won't have a final cost estimate until February 14th.
That number, the number that we were gonna be providing includes everything. Completely project, including the fields and parking lots.
I think we need to be clear about what we say when we say fields. So out of the scope of the building project, outside the scope, there's nothing that's gonna be done to the football field. There's nothing that's gonna be done to the varsity soccer field. So if everybody knows the landscape of Wacona, those are two fields that will not be touched. What will be touched is obviously the current baseball field, 'cause that's where the new school is.
Right.
And then the new baseball field will be relocated to where the current school is. But by building upwards, our footprint's gonna be smaller and building a two-story school, we're gonna have extra field space at Wacona. So we will gain an additional rectangular field, that I just, for argument's sake right now, am calling a lacrosse field. And that's where you could play soccer in the fall, lacrosse in the spring, and that sort of thing. That would be part of the building project as it stands right now, because it's within the scope of the construction zone.
So what we get is final number, that'll be all cost included?
Yes. But to keep in mind, just so people are clear, it does not touch the football field or the varsity soccer field.
Got it.
Yep.
Do you feel, somebody asked this the other day, the women's, Wacona Regional, women's softball team traditionally play their games at, I mean, at Colton Park, at Pine Grove Park. Is there a reason for that? I mean, with this new additional room you've got, would there be a field up there for them?
There is, in the current plans, there is not a softball field within the construction zone. There has been some talk outside the scope of the project, that's very important to understand.
Yeah, I understand.
About taking a look at the current, or the, it's actually now the former JV baseball field that's wedged between football, football field and the varsity soccer field. But there, those, that's just been loose conversation, nothing's said and done.
So it's possibly in the play late?
But it would have to be outside the scope of the project.
It'd get additional cost.
Yeah, but...
I mean, the cost is in the annual budget.
It may...
For the district.
I think softball needs to decide whether or not they wanna move up there.
Yeah.
That's part of the, that would be part of it. They would have to abandon their setup down here if they wanted to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? The elephant in the room is the cost. And we have no specific cost, and we won't until the 14th. Then that'll be up. And I know that we were given ranges, that range of district liability for the project, correct me if I'm wrong, is somewhere between forty and forty-four million dollars? Is that, am I speaking correctly? Okay. The other, the other problem that we have with figuring the cost and making sure that we get the right amount of increase to the taxpayer, 'cause we can't, we can't disregard that, because that's what's on everyone's mind, is how it's calculated in that. I know you have a thirty-year bond, it's four percent, it's blah, 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 you pay so much in the first year and so much in the, and it's all relative. But that's, that's more or less fixed, depending on what the project cost is. But where it can vary is the valuation of the house that you use. And we have several different valuations that we've been dealing with. The school at this point in time, and I believe it was obtained through Unibank, is that the town's average home valuation is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Our town has figured that, and what we use to figure out taxes, is a valuation of a house at two hundred and ten, Ken? Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Every single family house is valued at two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-two thousand.
So that makes a big difference with the tax bill. You're talking twenty-six thousand dollars, I think, somewhere around there. And per thousand cost, when you're, when you're talking of two, three, whatever dollars it is cost, it adds up. So when we get to that point, we gotta make sure that we got the right valuation, so that we, we can tell our constituents that this is it, folks, this is what you're looking at. Because that, that needs to be clear. That needs to be clear in my mind. Because down the road, if the, if the project does go through, then it's up to the town to figure out, okay, how are we, how are we gonna pay for it? We're gonna do it through taxation. We're gonna tax up to our levy limit. Okay, if that's not enough, do we go for Proposition Two and a Half override? All in all, do we go for a debt exclusion vote on this, so that we can pay for it? And then hopefully, one of those options, one of those options will take place, because then if it doesn't, it has to come out of the budget. So then we have to figure out where we're gonna get it out of our budget, and the only way to get it out of our budget is to cut. These are things that are on our minds as town leaders. Believe me, I don't wanna be a pessimist on this at all, because I'm on the committee, I believe in what the committee did, and the work that was put in that was lengthy and very thorough, and a decision that was a consensus and was right by the committee. But with that said, there are still other things to take into consideration. So as soon as we can get those, those type of figures to us, the better. And I think, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board, but I think that's something that we need to do, and it was brought up by Mr. Boyle our last meeting.
What? Blaming me, eh?
I'm not, no, I'm not throwing you under the bus here. But what I'm saying is, is that you said we need to know before we can make an informed decision on whether to back this.
Well, you should know, and we could take an educated guess, but the people in this audience tonight would very much like to know.
Yeah. I know they would, I know they would.
An approximate figure. John, when you talked about valuations before...
Yes.
Debt was only approximate. Medium-priced house is the best you can do. And what's also gonna happen this year, there's gonna be a town-wide real estate reevaluation. So that's gonna throw another clog into it.
Right.
Your assessment could go up, it could go down, depend on the value of your house.
But then, then again, you know, as it works, the valuation goes down, the taxes go up, the taxes go down, the valuations go up. I mean, it all, it all works out.
But I think that's the key component, that people would very much like to just have that approximate information. I don't think it's gonna change their mind any, but I think they'd like to know what it is. And there'd been various figures bandied about thirteen percent.
Yes.
Which in the case of a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, equates into a five-hundred-and-twenty-dollar increase.
Right.
It's all approximates.
Right.
Most of the thing is a hard figure.
But when I, when I figured it out, let me get my figures here for a second. Now, with the help, with the help of our assistant...
Question? Why is there two valuations? I thought you said there's one that's twenty-eighty-six and the other one's two-ten.
The valuation... You explain it better than I do, Ken. If you, you explain what you thought the lower valuation is of homes that we're dealing with versus the one that we use for taxes.
I don't know this for a fact, but I believe it includes multifamily housing units. We typically do the analysis based on the average single-family home.
Which would, which would drive the cost higher, or which has, or generate a cost higher. So, go ahead, John.
Yeah, to that, another reason might be that the lower one was originated from a bank. What is it, United Bank or something?
Unibank?
Unibank. Unibank, or they...
Well, we use Unibank.
They're fiscal advisors.
Yeah.
Okay.
They do, do a lot of...
So they have reasons why they lowballed this?
I don't think they did, but I'd like to see how they calculate it.
Okay. But, you know, for interest, if they're clients, so forth, potential advocates for mortgages, they may have lowballed it. But the town's assessment seems to be pretty accurate. The market in Dalton reflects that, too.
You can, you can find the numbers on D O Y's website through our project worksheet. It's active.
Well, in continuing that conversation, when I was, when I was figuring out the approximate values, all I used was a forty-million-dollar debt and a forty-four-million-dollar debt. With a thirty-year bond, four percent interest on that bond, and Assistant Superintendent Melissa Felkowski gave me this, well, spreadsheet formula to work with. And the bottom line was using that lower assessment and figuring out a forty-four-million-dollar debt, the tax impact or the tax increase per thousand would be two dollars and seventy-five cents a thousand, which would translate into five-hundred-and-twelve dollars increase for the average home, at a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Real close to my estimated guess, off the top of my head.
Yes, it was.
I bet.
Yeah. Now, for forty million dollars, it would be lower, it would be a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent per thousand tax increase, or four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars to the average tax bill. Now, I gave the information to Ken, who is, in his own right, a financial wizard, and I'll let him explain, I'll let him explain. His, this spreadsheet was in your mailbox tonight, did you?
I left it in.
Did you?
Yeah, I've got extra copies here.
Okay.
If you don't have a copy.
John, before the next charge, I wanna ask you one question.
Ask me?
No, Ken, folks.
Ask him?
Bond issues. Ken, can the town Dalton float a thirty-year bond issue?
I believe we can, but this would be a bond issue of the school district, there may be special provisions of state law after this, but I looked at chapter forty-four, and yes, simple answers.
Okay. You got that right, the whole time you told us twenty years was the limit, but that's the gap, can the Dalton?
You know what? It depends on the type of borrowing, what you're borrowing for. So, John asked me to take a look at this, and that's what I did. Took the information from Assistant Superintendent Felkowski, and I created a debt service schedule. And if you look at the top, I actually done two scenarios, because the range for the estimated cost of the building, of the whole project, rather, is between seventy and seventy-four million. And I did two scenarios, seventy and seventy-four million, based on thirty-five percent total reimbursement, giving someone reimbursable clause, and a forty percent reimbursement. And I used a four percent interest rate for both, and I did a debt service schedule over thirty years. Now, the way I did this is a typical municipal bond schedule, where you pay equal amounts of principal every year and varying amounts of interest based on the outstanding principal. You can set these schedules up so that you're paying, like a mortgage, equal amounts of principal and interest. The rates would probably be a little, not the interest rate, but the amount of interest paid over the term probably would be a little bit higher, because in the early years, you pay a lot of interest, and in the later years, you pay, you pay more principal. That being said, the averages, the total assessment in the town is over six-hundred-and-twelve million dollars, and the average single-family home is two-hundred-and-ten million dollars. The tax rate right now is nineteen forty-eight, and the average single-family tax bill is forty-one hundred bucks. So I'll give you two scenarios. At the bottom of the page, on the first page of the seventy-four-million-dollar project, the tax rate increase would be three dollars and eighty-four, this is in year one now, three dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand. The average single-family home addition, the addition to the taxes would be eight-hundred-nine thousand dollars. That's a nineteen-point-seventy-two percent increase.
This is for a thirty-five percent reimbursement?
That's for thirty-five percent reimbursement. It drops when you give a forty percent reimbursement to three fifty-five. The average single-family tax bill would increase by seven-hundred-and-forty-seven. The tax rate increase would be eighteen-twenty. But I took a look at the average over the whole... When I took a look at the average over the whole period, and that'd be somewhat analogous to making level principal and interest payments over the term of the loan, the tax rate would be $283. $283 would be, on the average, for 30 years, would be $283. The average single-family home tax bill would increase by $596. That's 1452 rate, 1452% rate increase. With a 40% reimbursement, and that drops a little bit to 261, the average single-family tax bill would rise to $549, and that's a 13.39% tax increase. Now, the second scenario is based on a $70 million project. Again, 4% interest rate, 35% reimbursement, and 40% reimbursement. I'll cut to the chase. And 35% reimbursement, tax rate would decrease by $3.63. The average single-family home bill, this is year one, 76587, with an 18% tax rate increase. With a 40% reimbursement, that drops a little bit to $3,035, $706 for the average, the increase for the average single-family home, and a 17.22% increase. The average would be $2.68, and the 35% reimbursement, $563. So you see, it makes not a lot of difference, 35, 35% to 40%, whether it's at 70 or 74 million. $563, 13% tax rate increase, $2.47, $519.12, $12.67. At the end of each column, I calculated what the difference is between the two rates, and you can see nearly $4 million in both scenarios that we have to pay extra based on the level of reimbursement. Now, one thing that's very interesting that you ought to know, will have to consider carefully, is whether this can actually be done, John pointed out, can this actually be done without a debt exclusion? I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think it can without devastating town government because we've patiently built up since 2008 some extra ability to levy taxes. It was zero for a number of years, and now it's at $800,000. So assume there's no debt exclusion. We'd have to use that $800,000 to help pay the bills, and that would raise our tax rate about 7%. We would still, take a look at the debt service levels. Even on average, it's either with a $74 million project, it's $1.7 or $1.5 million. Subtract the $800,000 from that, and you'll see, that's a big nut to crack. In 2008, when we had the Cutbacks, when we had to cut a quarter of a million dollars out of our budget, and I want to tell you, I struggled over the summer to do that without devastating the town government. But we went through the Hyatt Department like a sigh, and those of you who are there know it took a long time to recover. So my opinion is that this cannot be done without a debt exclusion vote. And just by way of example, we have, our town operating budget is $7.5 million, but a million and a half of that is either money that we paid to the city of Pittsfield for treading our wastewater, which comes to about a million dollars, taking care of our sewer, and another almost half a million dollars for vocational education, which we get reimbursement for. So we would have $6 million budget. We may have to cut $800,000 out of it, minimum, a million dollars. So you can see what I'm saying. Doing this without a debt exclusion vote is impractical. Whether we could use some of our levy and also exclude some, I don't know. We've never done it that way before.
Well, we haven't?
No. Typically, if a project is that excluded, then whatever that nut is we have to crack at debt service for the particular year, then gets put into our taxation.
So we'd have to use that ability to raise taxes, our levy limit, on something else, is what you're saying?
We could use it on something else. Yeah, it would remain. It would remain, and it would absorb whatever other operating increases. And remember, we have other projects that are going to take some debt service, like the engineering for Dalton Division Road. We have some sewer projects.
I thought we already borrowed on that.
No, we did not.
We did not? Was it voted to allow us to?
Yes.
Voted to allow us to, but we haven't borrowed it yet?
We have not borrowed it yet. And that's debt excluded. But that was debt excluded as well.
Excuse me?
But that was debt excluded as well.
Right.
Last town election.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, I have a quick question to Ken.
Please.
Yeah, Ken, obviously, you're going to suggest to the board a debt exclusion vote. When would this vote take place?
It would be in your discretion. It could be put on the annual town election soon as you can.
That'd be May 13.
Yes.
This year would have to be done?
It can be done at any time.
Because the bond wouldn't hit us for another two or three years, right? So can it wait that long before we ask for a debt exclusion?
You can do. You can do it at any time. In fact, 2008, one of the things we did to buy us some room in the budget was to ask the citizens to debt exclude some projects that we were paying for under the levy limit, and they did. And that really helped out.
Okay.
So a debt exclusion can be run at any time, as soon as you want or later on, by special election or the next election.
Okay. Thank you.
I know this is a district-wide election on April 7th and run by the district, but can we have, in conjunction with our own question, this only pertains to Dalton, a debt exclusion vote?
On April, that I don't know, Ken.
The last time, the school wrote up the warrant.
Yep.
So...
That's how we did the feasibility study, by the way. It was voted in April, and then we asked the citizens, I think.
For a debt exclusion later on.
At the town election to debt exclude it.
I think it would have to be separate.
Yeah.
I think it'd have to be separate.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? My next question is, do you feel that we have the information that we should vote on this tonight to promote or endorse this project or not?
Well, as I understand it, we wouldn't actually get the cost numbers to the 14th, and that would be after, obviously, we'll have only one more meeting before that, and we still wouldn't have the costs.
Exactly.
So if we're going to take a vote, we may also take it tonight because we're not going to have any more information next week.
You can either take the vote tonight, or you can take it the 11th, right? Or we could wait until after we have the numbers and take it on the 25th. Those would be your options.
I thought the idea was to give some guidance to you for the 14th.
That was one of the reasons, but...
Well, maybe we could give you some guidance, but not make it the final thing, based on what we now know. That would be my suggestion. Based on what we now know, knowing that we don't know the exact cost, give you some feeling of what the members of the board believe is the right way to look at it, the issue.
Okay. Other opinions?
I just don't know how much the numbers are going to change for us to change our decisions.
I kind of feel the same way. I mean, we've got, they're all right around in the ballpark.
They're all right.
And hopefully, when this project number comes in, it's on the lower end of the spectrum. Keep your fingers crossed. But, you know, you don't know. It's going to be somewhere, somewhere in there. But I think it's fairly accurate to say that our debt for this town is about, I forget what it is, 29 million, something like that. So, I agree with you, Mark, that the numbers aren't going to change that drastically. But I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable doing this because this is a big decision. It's going to be a big decision for the voters, no doubt. It's a personal type of decision that you're going to make, and each household has their own reason for voting for it or against it. And to, and I forget whose point, maybe it was Mr. Rob's point, that no matter what takes place, whether this is voted up or this is voted down, we're still going to be paying to do something with the school. You've got to fix it. You've got to do something. So, I just don't, I personally, is it okay? Do you mind if I make my own personal opinion on this? Yes, it will cost a little bit more to do it new. But weighing the pros and cons, being through these meetings for the past two and a half years, I still feel that the best option is to build new. And that's what we have before us as for the project, and that's what we have before us as for the numbers. I know it'll be a hardship for many, but I have no answer for that.
I would also say, building new at this point is going to get it done so much faster.
Yes.
That, to me, is very important. And Principal Rob, the way he described the school, I'm almost tempted to enroll in high school. I was very impressed. I mean, it's not better than where I went. I grew up in Connecticut, so...
Well, that's your problem. Mr. Rob is a fantastic educator, I have to say that. And I'm just not saying that because you're in front of me. I've always thought that, and he knows his stuff, so... Any other comments?
I'm looking for a motion for you to support the project, is that, or in general, just to support the project?
Go ahead.
I wish I could sit here. I want this high school just as much as everybody here. I have two kids that are in education. I have three grandchildren that would benefit from this. However, I have to take a step back, and as we as select board members have to look at the whole impact of the town, and this, I think, is going to put the town in a very bad position. We're borrowing money for the Dalton High, we're borrowing money for Dalton Division Road, sewer fees are constantly rising, our sewer system stinks, literally. We had two major breaks last year that cost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix. It's going to have a huge impact on our business, rents. We have a large population of older people. They're on fixed incomes, and they have no way of making this money up. I mean, and this is for 30 years, and some of you now who are flexible income, 30 years from now, are going to be on fixed income. And it's a huge, these people either take more out of their 401K or just go without something. There's no, Edward says the poverty level's up in town. We have trouble with people paying their taxes now. And last year, when I was the chair, there was several people that come in that just can't pay their taxes. And I honestly think this is going to put the town in a very bad position where we're going to have to come back here and face town services or employment. I mean, the town hall, the town employees already gone through one big cut. I mean, a lot of these people got their hours cut back to 32 hours or 40. And I just would love to say, I would nothing more to make me happy to say we can afford this, but I don't think we can afford it, and that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Ma'am. Other comments? Al, I'd love to, but the discussion's up here, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make one addition regarding finances.
Does anyone have an objection to Mr. Nato making this kind of, at this point in time?
No.
Thank you, Al Neo. I'm a GE retiree. My annual income, as a result of GE's situation, is going to drop to a five-digit number for the next so many years, simply because I lost the dividend income that used to be a big supplemental insurance for me. I'm on fixed income. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm voting against this project for Proposition 2 and 1/2 override or an exemption, simply because if I vote for it, I got to leave town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Further comments from the board?
I can't afford not to do it. If I have to do these repairs and fix the building, I can't afford not to do it.
Well, that's the other side I have to point to. As I was saying, this piece of the town, this piece of the district, has to be taken care of one way or another. And one way or another, the taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. Will one be better than the other? I really don't think so. I think the impact will generally be the same. It might be a little bit lower, but I just foresee us adding on to that amount year after year after year if things are getting fixed and then refixed or whatever. That's the way I look at it. So, any other comments or a motion? Right ahead.
Make the motion, we accept the idea of the school vote.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made. Let's second it. Is there further discussion?
Is that acceptance support?
Are you making that, that means a vote of support for the project?
Yes.
Further discussion? Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? One opposition, abstentions? Motion's passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Thank you, everyone, for your input. It was very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Damn, it's all you now.
You can run, but you can't hide.
I'm asking for an additional $45 million. No problem.
You got it.
I'll take your word for it. It's good enough.
Ken, do you want to go through an explanation before we get into dance?
Why don't?
Or do dance?
I would suggest we take emergency measures.
In traffic, right?
Yeah, in traffic, I can give you the explanation.
Okay. So we're on item eight with department budget reviews.
What number is this?
Number eight. Oh, you mean, what number is this? It's 293 and 295.
Got it. Last year, for the first time in many years, we put a little bit of money in the Traffic Commission's budget because of our participation in the streets program. We're suggesting that we maintain that appropriation because we just don't know what we might need to do. Just going to have a little money to, can I add anything?
We have another project that we're putting forward, the state for complete streets.
Uh, we have another project that we're putting before the state for complete streets. Um, and that may not go through simply because the success of the program has, uh, encouraged other communities in the state, more communities put in for the money. The money available has not gone up, the number of people asking for it. So the appearance is the state is giving people who haven't had projects before money. Doesn't mean we wouldn't get it, but we are gonna continue with what our plan was from day one. But the, um, we feel that there's, uh, there'll be a need with different educational opportunities that'll be out there for members of the Traffic Commission. And the supplies and everything that we need, uh, to run the program for us to keep the money at a level fund.
Dan, what, what was the project?
The project that we're, we're submitting is Pleasant Street and Franklin Street to replace the sidewalks, uh, along that way. Uh, when we, if we can get that project completed, we'll have a complete loop from, um, Park Avenue, the corner of Park Avenue, all the way up to Franklin and North Street, Route Nine, back down into the middle of town. We'll have a complete route of, uh, what they call walking routes, jogging routes, whatever, of safe sidewalks, and, uh, it just would improve, uh, the, the whole area.
Park Avenue sidewalks are okay?
Yes. There's some that need, some that.
But not a job like you did on High Street?
No, nothing like that.
Okay. Great. TA?
Thank you.
The next budget is, is emergency management. And you can see the salaries decreased by the amount of the stipend increase. And the, um, expenses are level funded. And Dan has such a good handle on what we spend the money on that I'd like to ask him to make a little presentation.
What we spend our money on, it's, the stipend is to overpay me. Our main expense is, is other purchase services. That is to pay for our Code Red program, um, which I, I can say nothing bad about. Uh, it works very well. We've been very successful. Um, we're getting a lot of input from people. I don't know if you noticed, but if you had your tax bill, we're sending out, uh, slips of paper and, uh, to remind people to sign up for the Code Red. Uh, with the last mailing out, we've gotten about two dozen responses from people who wanna make sure that they were on there, uh, so that it is going forward. It is a good program. Uh, and the other big expenses underneath that is the GPS units that are on these highway trucks. Uh, we, we put them on there for, uh, having the ability to locate them in a time of need. If we have an emergency, uh, we, if we have an immediate need for response, we'll be able to check the GPS units and it will tell us where the nearest truck is. We can then call those people, send them right to the emergency. But in addition, uh, GPS units allow us to, uh, do, uh, weekly or monthly reports showing the efficiency of the units, uh, how many miles they're traveling. It's gonna be a big help for John to show, um, uh, wear and tear on the vehicles, uh, how they're used. And it's, it's been very, very, uh, successful once again as for projects for us to do.
So this is more than just a GPS unit like you have on your phone? I mean, it's a GPS unit that does a lot more?
We can track, daily, we can track how many trips each vehicle makes, where it goes.
What's it get downloaded to, this information?
It gets loaded, downloaded to a program, an app that we have that's on the computer. Uh, we're working on putting it in, uh, like John has it on his computer. I have it on my computer. Uh, I don't think we've downloaded it to Ken's yet because he's got enough things to look at on his computer. Um, but we can also look at it, anybody actually can look at it as long as they've got the keys to get into the system. Then they can tell you what's going on, uh, where, how the vehicles are being used.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? TA?
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Good luck. It's good. You've already got, what, three hundred and seventy more budgets to go through?
A couple.
Just a couple.
It's a, it's a breeze compared to what we just went through, so.
The next budget we have is, uh, one twenty-two, Select Board. You see that Jody prepared this? The stipends were increased by two percent and the expenses were level funded. And that's really all there is to it.
Questions? Comments? TA? TA?
Laura McFuchio was sick today, so I'm gonna present the assessor's budget. Uh, salaries are up slightly, but the amount of the colon plus, you know, the after-effects of any step increases that happened in the last year, it's one hundred and fifty-eight percent. And, uh, she was able to reduce certain expenses slightly, consulting services, registry of deeds, in-state travel, so we have a decline of fourteen hundred dollars in projected expenses. And, uh, there's some attachments here, but that really is all there is to the budget. Staffing remains the same and the types of expenditures remain the same.
Ken, go ahead. No, she's gonna say questions.
That reevaluation we're going through, is that in this current fiscal year or is that gonna be the next fiscal year?
We're working on it now, John, and when we do the next budget, um, revaluation, number one forty-two.
Oh, it's gonna be a separate budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate budget. You know, she'll take some expenditures.
I'm just curious, services, but. When will the results be out? It's probably not till?
Two thousand twenty. Yeah, I think we're gonna finish it up next year for the two thousand twenty fiscal year.
And now it's only once every five years?
Yeah, it'll be, then the next one will be two thousand twenty-five. So we're on a four-year cycle. Get assigned to the five-year cycle.
Yeah, it was three originally.
Yeah, it was three. Went to four, now then we'll go to five, so it's two thousand and twenty fiscal year.
Anything else? TA? TA?
TA.
The next budget, Department one forty-two, is the revaluation certification. You can see we're doing real estate and personal property. Big amount is requested for the real estate, a smaller amount for personal property, but up significantly from the prior fiscal year by a twelve, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred dollars in order to get the job done.
Did we put this out the contract, Ken, or just?
Yeah, we did. In fact, uh, we've signed a contract, I think for both of these. Yeah, we did put it out to bid.
Ken, is this one of those ones we can put some money towards it every year or just?
That's what we've done in the past, Michael. That's right. So they're already under contract and this is, this will be the summer of that, this is the fiscal year.
Anything else? TA? I'm starting to lose my voice. I got a cough drop on me. It's the cold that's going around.
Okay, the next one should be one ninety-six, Town Report. Now, I was looking at this before I came in here tonight and I noticed one thing. Jody prepared this for me, but I think we should level fund it. Uh, because I went back and looked at our expenses and I, I think we're gonna be closer to level funding. So rather than get caught, caught short, I'd ask you to increase it by the amount of the decrease, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. TA?
Next budget you should have in front of you is five ninety-one, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. This one's particularly easy because it's an assessment. You get an annual assessment from the Regional Planning Commission, which is attached. Again, I've asked for a ten thousand dollars. Remember, it's about three or four years ago, we added fifteen thousand dollars for any technical assistance that the Regional Planning Commission might provide us during the fiscal year. What we are planning on doing is doing our open space plan, which hasn't been redone for over ten years. And, um, so I wanna set that aside in case we need it. We, we might get into that contract this year. You can see it's there. We haven't contracted for it, but waiting for the calls of the Regional Planning. And that will be supplemented by their, um, district local technical assistance programs, a grant of staff time for particular projects, and that's what we applied for this year and we're accepting to do the open space.
Hey, TA?
Next one should be nine eleven. It's Berkshire County Retirement. Again, that's an assessment from the county, uh, Berkshire County Retirement Board. And it is what it is. You can see that the actual assessment is attached. I'm pleased to report that it's much lower than I had projected. So it's only up by one point one six percent. I expected about a five percent increase in that budget.
TA?
I got a question, just.
Go ahead.
Just for personal. When we pay this, is this, is this money include money that's taken out of people's paychecks, employees?
No.
Or this is separate?
This is, this is our assessment by the.
Gotcha.
County Retirement Board.
Yeah.
Any reason for it being so low?
I don't know. They do a.
Or is there investments, are their investments that good?
Yeah, you know what? I, you know, I did not call and ask why it was so low. Uh, but they do a, like a little bit of an actuarial study. They can.
Yeah.
Look at our payrolls to try to determine what the increase is.
I mean, I'm not complaining, but it's just.
Yeah, mine. But I don't know. I don't know any exact reason.
It's like health insurance. Not complaining about that either.
Right. The next budget is nine thirteen, unemployment insurance. We've had this at five thousand dollars for many years. Uh, this is supplemented by a treasurer's reserve fund. They were originally capitalized at five thousand dollars. It's down to four thousand dollars. We didn't have any payments in this last year, but in the prior year we had five thousand. We paid out five thousand dollars. Back when I did a study, we never have gone over about eleven thousand dollars, I think, in extra payments. That's why we have a treasurer's budget. She can dip into that without any further appropriation approved.
Okay. TA?
Next budget we have is judgments and claims. Uh, we kept this a few thousand dollars forever, in case they've been here a minute. And, uh, you can see there were no expenditures in the prior fiscal year, uh, in, in the current fiscal year, but we had, uh, fourteen hundred dollar payments in FY eighteen.
Yeah, that was a cemetery thing.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. TA?
And the last we have is commissioners of trust funds. And we've always kept this very small budget. I, I can only remember spending money on it, but the once, and that was for an opinion of council with respect to a trust document.
TA?
Okay, now I'll just run through the budget very quickly. Got the schedule in front of you, which I am reworking. We're gonna move, if you got this schedule here. Um, you'll see the ones we went through tonight. I'm moving the accountant's budgets all down to March eighteenth. We're not gonna be, uh, quite done until March eighteenth because the count's gonna be in school or end of school that week, uh, the week before. So that will be changing slightly. But we have to finish up by the eighteenth for the, um, finance committee to complete their work and get the budget done for the publications for coming in. You'll see in the budget worksheet, all those budgets that have been approved are highlighted. They're all bold and includes the budgets that were approved today. Uh, and again, we have better results. I got the actual results in for Berkshire County Retirement Association. I mean, retirement assessment. And the other thing I've put in here, if you'll go to page four and down to the second block, it's state aid, so state aid. These are the actual numbers from the governor's budget. I had projected an overall two point three percent change. It's gonna be up four percent. Largely have the reimbursement of veterans' benefits. That's really what's driving it. See, the ones are quite small. And you can see.
The way things are trending, Ken, and I'm, what I mean is like.
Yeah.
The Berkshire, with the retirement and health insurance.
Yeah.
Do you think this is gonna be going down, our, our proposed tax rate?
It, I don't know that the tax rate will go down, but it will be, certainly be lower than I had projected in December.
Okay.
Right now. And that's, I'm glad you said that again, John, because it's, I haven't factored that in here. I had prepared this and then we got the information from Maya on our health insurance increases. It's gonna be virtually zero. I had group health going up by almost four percent, three point eight percent. But, um, I, I haven't, you know, I haven't figured it in this budget yet, but it's gonna be essentially zero increase for the next year.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't wanna belabor this too much, but if there are any questions about any of it, uh... Right now we're showing a two point nine percent tax increase, but I think we're gonna be better than that. Well.
CB RSD's gonna be very low again this year.
We haven't seen the big, the very, really big departments in the police and police works or really big departments.
You trying to do soften us up?
It's low last year, low this year.
Yeah, well, last year was great.
And it's probably gonna be lower this year, I think.
It is crazy.
I'm trying to think of the numbers. I don't, I don't have them off the top of my head, but it's low.
Ken, I'll get your digress for a second. I meant to ask this when you were here. Was that Melissa here, the district treasurer?
No.
No, that was Lori Casma.
No, I know her, but I thought somebody mentioned that she was here.
I mentioned, I mentioned that she gave me information.
Okay. I didn't see her here. She's kinda hard to miss, but anyway, a question would have been to her. How long does it take if it gets approved on April seventh for this bond issue to kick in? I realize there's, you know, bridge loans and things like that.
Yeah, same.
You don't, you.
April sixth.
You pay, you pay small amounts or part of the cost of the project while they're building it. Once it's built, then you gotta pay the whole thing. You know what I mean?
So it's a couple of years before they'll actually float the bond issue?
Yeah, the total bond.
Yep.
Because I believe how, how it would work is that you bond smaller amounts for shorter terms. And then when you get done with the whole thing, it's the whole bond for the longer term. If that makes sense?
Yeah, it's, in the beginning, it's like a bridge loan. It bridges the period of construction.
Yeah.
Until it's done. You gotta fund the whole thing. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
They can do a series of bonds with some of the shorter terms, too.
Yeah.
Right, so the one long bond for thirty years. But one of the things I, I forgot to ask, and I don't know the answer to the question, is do they intend to roll, there's some existing debt we're calling it, that's still gonna be paid for the next ten years? Are they gonna roll that into the bond?
I don't believe so. I don't know that they can.
Yeah.
I can ask, but I don't, I'll ask.
What curiosity and anything else?
I'll ask. I'll ask if that's.
There's a real good question, Ken. Would the bondholders look at scans that you're tearing down their, uh, basically collateral for their bond?
I really don't know. I don't know.
No!
Well, I don't know what it's really much collateral. Who would buy it?
It could raise an objection. You see, wait a minute.
Okay, so are you good?
Definitely.
Okay, let's go on to number nine. The letter to the legis, Legislative Delegation with regard to cable franchise fees. And this was requested, uh, last meeting, and I received, uh, a lot of information that's in your packet from, um, Pittsfield Community Television and things that were done by the city of Pittsfield. Um, and this is, this is more or less what has been requested, uh, that, that we do, that we send a letter to, uh, the Chair of the FCC with regard to our opposition to the new FCC, um, rule. And I'm gonna impose upon you, John, because you'll, you'll, uh, state this better than I as for that rule, what it does or what it is.
My understanding is it was an attempt to, um, have the cable companies, uh, kinda negate the. My understanding is it was an attempt to have the cable companies kind of negate the contracts that they have in terms of the, it allows them to charge the cable, the cable, the public access operators.
You.
Us, Pittsfield, Lee, North Adams. They would then charge us for use of the cable for drops in the various communities. Like we have a drop here, one, you know, the senior senator, and one at the library.
Yeah.
We would have to pay for those out of the money that we get. So it effectively cuts down our operating budget because the whatever. And they have, last I knew, there weren't any limits on what they could charge us. Now, there may become limits if this thing passes. But that effectively is what it would do. It would, you know, kind of cut our operating funding that we get.
And we have to pay them for the channels.
There you go.
Our channels, our access channels.
Yep. And any drops that we have, for numbers, they would charge us for the drop here or for the drop elsewhere, which I think currently you're already paying for, which you shouldn't be.
That I didn't know.
Well, you're paying a franchise fee.
Yeah.
Which is effectively that.
Do you know how much it would cut into our budget that we receive?
Well, I don't.
There is no, there is no level.
We have no clue, yeah. They're all open source. This should also go to our state senators, because they're the ones that have contact and impact on the FCC chairman.
That's why we had it to the Legislative Delegation, which would be everybody in our state, I would imagine. So did you have a chance to look over the, specifically it would be the letter from the mayor of Pittsfield to the FCC? And there is a another letter. I don't know how to pronounce this person's name. Ajit?
Pi.
Pi? Who's chairman, United States Senate? No. Chairman FCC. This was from the United States Senate. So and our state senator, Adam Hines, also sent a letter to this person. So what's your closure? I think we should, we should send something along to the FCC with regard to this. I don't know if we can or how the letter should be made up. We do the similar letter that Pittsfield did? I would not know how to draft something like this. What do you think?
You called him. When he said in the letter, then, his friends are opposition to, and go on record as being opposed to the FCC's rulemaking regarding cable franchising docket number 5311.
Where are you reading, John?
Right here.
Okay.
Does that make sense what he said, what John's saying?
And requesting that the congressman or put in the appropriate title himself come out in opposition. He should send a letter to the FCC chair.
Okay. Ken?
We have a commission on this, right?
A cable commission here in town?
Yeah.
Well, we did.
We have a committee.
Committee.
We did. We still do?
We do.
El Nado is on it.
Is he?
Yeah.
Some Margaret Kao, too, I heard.
Really? You know her?
I met her.
I wanted to refer this to them.
We'll send it to the chair for.
Mike?
Yeah, give them a jump.
Oh, you're, oh.
Give it out to some.
Cable Advisory Committee.
Okay. Are you talking about the same committees?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We could refer it, yeah. We could refer it to them for a draft.
They don't meet too often.
No, they haven't, we haven't, they haven't met in a while. I'm not part of it, but I've been to their meetings. But the last meeting was September, I believe.
Yes.
So we're also in the works. Ken sent out an email, and I don't know if he copied you guys or not, but he sent out an email to, who was it? To Spectrum?
Melinda.
Melinda. Wondering what's going on. So why don't, why don't then we, we refer this to them for a draft to be sent out? Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
To whom?
To our.
Oh, that committee.
What's its formal name?
The Dalton Cable Advisory Committee.
Dalton Cable Advisory Committee.
That's him, and he used the information provided in his letter.
Which letter, please?
Yeah, the packet of, yes.
Yeah. Well, the letter, you, the information in the letter.
The information in the packet, yeah.
Opposing the new rules and regulations being formulated by the FCC.
Yeah, we recommend that they do that.
As we recommend, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we don't have to, we don't have to vote it down. We'll just give it to them with that recommendation, which Ken can pass along, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then they will give it back to you as a draft?
No, we'll get it back to us to, to sign, send out.
Dalton Stationery.
Oh, you're on that committee, too?
Yeah.
Okay. I might talk.
Don't play up over there.
I didn't think it was that complicated. I think you had the basics there, just, you know.
Throw a little harsh language.
Well, you know, I'm, it's a matter of who's going to draft it, you know? And see what you can do? I know we have some influence with that.
Well, I, but I think if you're referring, you have to have the whole committee.
Yeah, I know, I know. I know what you're saying, John. I don't want to plagiarize what the mayor of Pittsfield said either.
You could request permission.
Yeah, well, we could. But we should, we should personalize it with our, with our own issues. If you had.
No.
No, never mind, never mind. Okay, so we're done with that? We'll leave it at that for now? Let's, let's try to get that for the, for the end of February. Two meetings from now, we're going to meet on the 11th and we'll meet on the 25th. So if we could have that for the 25th? Is that doable with you, Ken? Do you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll try.
Yeah, we're done. Meeting on the 18th. Depends how.
It's present in stay.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a day, uh, day.
I think myself they are. So we got a meeting on the 11th and the next one's the?
25th.
25th.
Okay.
You could have been here by yourself.
Yeah.
A little quick meeting. Town manager updates?
I have two brief updates. I'm pleased to report to you that the long-delayed fusatonic interceptor sewer repair is going out of bid as of tomorrow. It's due on February 28th. You remember, we had to put that project off while we dealt with the INI study and the response to the INI study and repairs to the sewer down the road. So that's out there. I'm glad it is.
What's your estimated cost of that, Ken? Do you have a?
I get to look and see what the engineer estimated again, but you know, it's in $150,000. The other thing that I wanted to report to you reminded me that Berkshire Town Managers had Representative Pigna Telly come to their meeting a month ago. And one of the things he wanted to speak to us about was revising the Chapter 90 formula. And he actually had a list, I couldn't find it. But if the formula is revised so that more emphasis and more weight is given to roads, every town in Berkshire County would benefit. The only town that wouldn't benefit, community that wouldn't benefit would be the city of Pittsfield. So he is looking for some support from communities to say, let's change this formula. He's looking for letters of support from us so that the legislature will consider doing that, sending it to the lieutenant governor. So I'm going to go ahead and do that because Dalton's going to benefit by it unless anybody has an objection. Use your hand and I won't do that. You'll see a copy of the letter in your box.
What do you think the benefit lined up in?
It was minor to Dalton, but it's still more.
More?
Yeah.
More is better.
It is.
Yeah.
So I think the chances of that passing the legislature is at zero.
Yeah, it's tough because, you know, population.
You're taking money away from them.
Well, a part of that is to ask for more money, of course, for everybody.
Yeah.
Oh. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Items for future agendas? Anybody, I'm not going to go through the list. Anybody have anything that they need added on? I'll update it this week. Okay, moving on. Remarks to the select board? Anybody have anything? I want to, I want to thank you for your, your time tonight with this building project debate. I thought it was a good debate. It's, it's what Mark was saying in between when people were filing out is probably one of, one of the hardest type of votes to take as a board member. Because it really is it's, it's not only personal, but it's also something that we have to deal with, with the whole town. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's difficult, but I thank you for your time and your input and your thoughts on it. And I'll keep you updated as things go on.
It is difficult because, you know, I understand that some people are going to suffer with the higher taxes, be a real suffering. On the other hand, the children would really be suffering if you don't do this. So it isn't possible that there isn't going to be pain for some people. No matter what you do.
That's the point.
And I think the other, what Mr. Ra was saying, we also can't do nothing. Because that's going to cost us in the long run also. There's just was, there's only one, for me personally, and that's what this order is, is personal, is that there was only one solution or one outcome for me. And people, and they vary from person to person, but we're going to want to pay them one way or the other, I thought.
It was interesting that of the three people that were against it, two of them, well, actually, I should, Bob mentioned the tax issue, El Nado. But the other two were against it because of the thermal geo not being involved in it. Dave and Dick Johnson. So there was no really, I expected more opposition.
Yes.
And none of it didn't materialize.
There are, there are many reasons to either, as I said before, vote for it or vote against it. And it's all how you feel. That's why it's so, this is such a personal issue. But we also have to think about the town as we were bringing up as for where the money is coming from, so. And we may have aged Ken a little bit more tonight.
Yeah. I thought you said that about, it only applies to Dalton. I mean, other towns can finance it however they want them. But that is absolutely mandatory that we get there. If we don't, virtually closing the town government.
There may be support for that.
Yeah, there may be, yeah. May have to trump.
Well, again, thank you. Okay, announcements. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hey, you're thanking us, so thank you. You made all this happen. You did all the preparation work. You had all the facts and figures. You handle everybody with decorum and professionalism, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You make this look real good.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Announcements, if I can get on here with my voice. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which meant went into effect on November 15th, 2018, and will be in effect until April 15th of this year. I hold office hours by appointment and if you get in on February 7th, which is just coming Thursday, I'll be at the Senior Center from 4:00 PM until 6:00 PM. And for further information, you can call 684-6111, extension 11, or my home number, 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his offices district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members. If interested, contact the Town Manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. And I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into the executive session to conduct a strategy session and preparations and negotiations with union and non-union personnel, the Highway Association, patrol officers, highway superintendent, police sergeant, highway foreman, to consider the purchase, exchange lease, survival of real estate, and not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll call both, Mr. Boyes.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud.
Yes.
Mr. Bartellus, yes. We're in adjournment for a few minutes.